Yeah, it's, um, I'll be glad when it. So now we.
The mayor, you.
No, the mirror.
Oh, the mirror, mirror.
That's a two-sided mirror.
You get waved to it.
I know, I feel nervous.
I would like to call the regular meeting of the Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successors, Successor Agency, and City Council to order, please. Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmembers Amora.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rounds.
Here.
And Mayor Sarno.
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Next, we have the invocation. I would like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to lead us in today's invocation, please. Please rise.
I am able to do all things through Him who strengthens me, Philippians 4:13. When we come across adversity in life, lean on His grace and understanding. Your faith will carry you through. Even when things seem impossible to resolve, seek God. He's always faithful. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for what You've given us. Allow us to give back to others to show our immense gratitude for our blessings. Shower each of us with Your protection as we continue to share joy and grace all around us so others can be blessed too. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call upon the youth leadership, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you can place your right hand over your.
Over here, come on over here.
Uh, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Vanessa Doss, and I am the Vice Chair of the Youth Leadership Committee, and I am currently a sophomore at Santa Fe High School.
And I'm Giselle Morales, and I'm currently a senior at Santa Fe High School. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, girls.
Next introductions, I'd like to introduce the following representatives from the chamber. Uh, I think we believe we have Wendy Meter from Tangroom here. Wendy, thank you for joining us. Next, we're going to be moving on to presentations. Uh, you don't want to do presentations? We don't have to if you don't want to. Items, the Best of Santa Fe Springs Celebration, 50 Years of Lowers Welding and Fabrication Inc., Businesses in the City of Santa Fe Springs. I'd like to call upon Public Information Officer Raylene Barazza.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Sarno and members of the City Council. It is my honor to stand before you this evening to recognize our first-ever Best of SFS recipient. Tonight, we celebrate the remarkable milestone that marks the 50th anniversary in business for Lowers Welding and Fabrication in our beloved city. In the last 50 years, Lowers Welding and Fabrication has come a long way from its humble beginnings to evolve into the successful steel construction company that it is today. In 1973, the Lowers family started the company from their garage in Whittier and transitioned to renting small shops in Santa Fe Springs. It was in 1992 when the Lowers family found the company's permanent home on Painter Avenue in the city of Santa Fe Springs and have operated out of that location ever since. Don and Pat Lowers planted the seed that grew into the multimillion-dollar business that their daughters, Don Lowers Davis, Nora Lowers, and Sherri Lowers now run. The company's mission is based on words Mr. Lowers would often say, "Hard work and determination to do what needs to be done to get the job done." Working alongside their parents, this mindset was instilled in the family as their daughters learned to run the business from the ground up. While working at the shop, the Lowers daughters fondly remember their father treating them like one of the guys and their mother teaching them how to manage the business. Unfortunately, Don Lowers passed away in 2010. Without hesitation, his daughter stepped up into the leadership role to continue their family's legacy, and within 13 years, they have tripled their business revenue, giving them the ability to add jobs and contribute to the local economy. Lowers Welding and Fabrication has worked on large projects such as Los Angeles Metro, Walshay Corridor, LAX Crenshaw Corridor, Regional Connector, Westside Connector, and Purple Lines 2 and 3. Their mother Patricia Lowers, now retired, shared, "I am very grateful for my daughters and what they have been able to accomplish in construction," which has been a man's world for many years. They continue to break the glass ceiling. Lowers Welding and Fabrication is now 100% female-owned and operated business. They are also recognized in the heavy civil construction industry as a leader in steel construction. I would now like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to share some words.
Well, what do you say after that? I think one thing I want to share is the Lowers family has been personal friends of mine for, I'm not going to say how many years, a long time, and to have it be a women-owned business, what a testament to what women can do in the community, not just that, but in an industry where it's traditionally men-run. So it's a huge testament to this family. Mama Lowers is here. We're so grateful, yes, big round of applause for Mama Lowers. Because of you and your husband's vision, this is what it's become, 50 years in the city of Santa Fe Springs, and apparently this is the first one of the awards like this because it's just a legacy now, 50 years and many more to come. And I think it's time to bring up the family, and you guys get to have a special award.
Come on up. Here, you guys hold the. Come on over, join us.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next is proclamation, proclaiming March 20, 2024 as National Reading Month. I would like to call upon Library Service Manager Deborah Reha.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The library has invited two families to accept the proclamation for National Reading Month. First, we have Lizette Natalia and Jonathan Marin. They're active participants in many city programs and events, and the children have been coming to bilingual storytime for several years. Also, we have Alice Perez and Brez Figueroa and their son Elias. Elias also attends our bilingual storytime, and last year Elias completed the library's 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program.
Wow.
So I'd like to invite them both up to get the proclamation.
Come on up. Yeah, come on. There you go. Good job. I think we got this one. We can see over this one.
We can't give a problem.
Thank you so much.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Okay. One more. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Wait, one more.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question. You want to tell them a little bit about yourself, what school you go to, and what grade you're in, and what's your favorite class? Tell them, not me, well, tell us all.
I like doing art because we get to do a lot of crafts.
Nice. Are you going to enter into our art fest that's coming up?
What's art fest?
The art fest, it's coming up, so.
Oh, yeah, like to like paint and do stuff.
Yep. Are you going to do that?
I like doing that.
Okay, well, we're going to make sure you're going to get in, okay? Okay. Tell everybody what's your name and what school you go to.
My name is.
What school you go to?
What?
Do you go to school? What school?
Lakeview.
Lakeview, what grade in?
Oh.
Karen, kindergarten? Nice. What's your favorite subject? What do you like doing the most?
Painting.
Painting? Nice. Good job.
My name is.
What, 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 what school do you go to?
I go. Thank you, I go.
What grade in?
Kindergarten.
You're in kindergarten too?
Yeah.
Are you guys in class together?
Yeah, I'm in the same.
Uh-oh. Nice. So you like recess too?
Yeah.
Well, thank you guys for coming out. Good job in reading.
Come over here, guys, guys, you got to shake your hand. Let's shake your hand. Here, come here. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing them out, too. Yeah, I don't think I've read a thousand books my whole life. I don't know a thousand books before kindergarten. Wow, good job. Introduction of new employees, introduction of new employees. I would like to call upon Director of Police Services, Dino Torres, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sarno. Good evening, Council. I'm happy to introduce two new team members to our department. The first is Kristen. Please join us at the podium, Kristen. Kristen joined us as a Senior Code Enforcement Inspector at the beginning of the month. Kristen previously worked 19 years for the city of Huntington Park, where she spent three years as a police cadet, eight years as a code enforcement officer, and eight years as a lead code enforcement training officer. While there, she helped create case management software to improve efficiencies in the code enforcement program. Prior to that, she worked for AMC Movie Theaters as an operations manager. Kristen earned a bachelor's degree from Cal State Long Beach in English with a concentration in rhetoric and composition. Kristen loves sports and is a fan of the Dodgers, Cowboys, and Lakers. She is a Swifty, and she loves the TV shows Friends and The Office. One of her goals is to help the Code Enforcement Division be more effective and efficient. Let's welcome Kristen Haney.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Council, and Director Torres, just thank you for the hospitality and your team welcoming me to the city. And all of the staff at the city has been very accommodating and welcoming, and I'm just happy to be here and eager to learn more about the city and serve Santa Fe Springs the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Next, Samil, please join us at the podium. Samil, Samil joined us in November of last year as a part-time PSO, and then in December was promoted to Lead Public Safety Officer. Samil previously spent two years as a Community Services Officer for the city of Sierra Madre. Currently, he is also a Reserve Police Officer with the city of Sierra Madre Police Department. Prior to that, he served as a dispatcher for care ambulance for one year and worked as a videographer for a local news station. He earned a bachelor's degree from Cal State Northridge in Sociology and was awarded with the dean's list upon graduation. He also holds certification as an EMT. Samil's hobbies include building cars and computers, going to the shooting range, and flying drones. Following in the steps of his father, Samil is co-owner of a coffee shop and bakery. His future goals are to become a police officer. Let's welcome Samil Siddiqui.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Director Torres. This city has been very welcoming to me.
Yeah, sorry.
I love it working here. I thank the director for the opportunity to be in this supervisory position, and I'm very excited to give the city what I can offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call upon Captain Aaron Reese for his introduction.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. First off, I'd like to call up to the podium Detective Samim Safazada. And both of the individuals that I'm going to be introducing tonight are both newly appointed detectives here in the city of Santa Fe Springs. So Samim was born in Afghanistan. He and his family moved here to the U.S. when he was 13 years of age. Samim grew up in Torrance and the South Bay area. He attended Gardena High School, where he played football, ran track, and played volleyball. He attended El Camino College and UC Riverside. Prior to working for the Whittier Police Department, he worked with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department assigned to the Men's County Jail. Samim has almost seven years of law enforcement experience. Prior to being appointed as a detective, he served here in the community of Santa Fe Springs. He distinguished himself as a proactive police officer. He distinguished himself as a problem solver, which made him the perfect selection to be a detective. He was selected to the detective position in January 2024. Currently, Samim investigates grand GTA's, stolen vehicles. In his spare time, he enjoys hanging out with his family. He comes from a big family, three boys, three girls, family now lives in Florida. He enjoys working out, Muay Thai, kickboxing, and his pride and joy is Milo, his Frenchie Bulldog. Welcome, Samim.
Welcome.
Next up, I'd like to call up Detective Brenda King. Brenda grew up in the city of Downey. She attended St. Joseph High School in Lakewood. After graduating from Lakewood, I'm sorry, St. Joseph High School, she obtained her bachelor's degree from Long Beach, Long Beach State, received a degree in consumer science and child development. After obtaining her bachelor's degree, she obtained her master's degree from Liberty University in Management Leadership. Brenda has been with the Whittier Police Department for 16 years. Previously, she was a field training officer. She worked at the Whitwood Marketplace, distinguished herself in patrol as an expert in DUIs and under-the-influence investigations. She's currently one of our drone operators and has had lots of success locating people just kind of hiding out from our, some of our cases. I know that she recently located a domestic violence suspect with her drone. That was a great find. She currently investigates burglaries, bomb threats, and stolen property. She has two children, ages 16 and 9. She's extremely close with her family. Actually, today, she still lives within walking distance of her family, which includes her brother, cousins, and uncles. Her favorite season is summer. She enjoys working out, camping, and cooking. And if you need any tips, she's an avid Yelper, so she knows all the good food spots. I'm proud to have both of these detectives on our team down here. In fact, they just, they were a little late, not late for this ceremony, but I was like, oh, man, are they going to make it? They were on a surveillance in a nearby town and arrested a grand theft suspect, so kudos to them and their hard work.
Welcome both of you, and thank you for your service, for what you guys do. Thank you. That's it? Dino?
Yes, sir.
Changes to the agenda, Mr. Bobbidea, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes, Mayor.
Okay, public comments. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing items on the agenda or any other matters within the council's jurisdiction. You will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes once Deputy City Clerk announces your name. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers today, Mayor.
I will now close public hearing, comments, and move on to the next item. Staff communication, Mr. Bobbidea, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call upon our Director of Community Services, Maricela Valdés.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have one item to share with you this evening. We've got, our city library is going to be offering a magic show for our next First Friday program, which will take place on March 1st at 7:00 p.m. So come join us at the library as we watch Illusions by Alan, featuring award-winning Alan Oshiro. The show's going to include astonishing acts of magic, fun comedy for all ages, incredible levitation, some ball manipulation, and a lot more. So the performance is also going to include audience participation, and it'll reach out to the hearts of kids, young adults, families of all ages. So we're going to be serving fresh, light refreshments, and we'll also be distributing books to all the children in attendance to take home. So no registration is required, and we encourage everybody to join us. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. That's it? All right, on to the next one. Public hearing, item number four, Annual Weed Abatement Program. I would like to call upon Mr. Bobbidea.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual weed abatement program that we have, that we have a staff report. Staff is available for any questions that council may have.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the podium and state your name. Deputy, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Is there any discussion on motion for approval of item number four? Oh, sorry. Closed public hearing, is there any discussion on or a motion for approval?
Um, you know, when we have the weed abatement program, I'm wondering also if we can, um, bring some kind of process when it comes to any of our, whether it be our facilities that we own or any businesses, that they make sure they, we, they, they keep up their upkeep, you know, whether it be, you know, you hear what's happening in L.A., you know, you heard about the graffiti, you know, they're, they're building. So I would like to see a lot of our businesses making sure they're, they have that upkeep so they don't allow for homeless or anybody else to go in there and just, you know, think that they could just, you know, live there. So if we have some kind of weed abatement as a process or as a policy to bring in, so it allows other businesses, when they come into Santa Fe Springs, they see that everybody's keeping their, you know, whether or not they have a business there functioning, but that they're keeping some kind of upkeep there.
We can certainly take a look at that for our next, our next weed abatement program.
So would we do it with the adoption of Councilmember Zamora's?
Um, Mayor, I would not, only because we may have to look at our, our current policies, and that's something we'll bring back to the council for you to.
Yeah, that was just the direction.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Rounds, second by Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number five, fiscal year 2023, 24, mid-year budget review and modifications. I would like to call upon Mr. Bobbidea again.
Thank you, Mayor. We're real excited to present our 2023, 2024 mid-year budget review and modifications. This will be the last of our mid-year budgets. We're going to be doing quarterly budgets starting next fiscal year, so this will be the last time you see it at mid-year. Next year, you'll see, you'll see them at quarter break, so we'll be able to provide more information a lot sooner as to how our budgets are doing. So without further ado, I'd like to present Lana, the HR Director of Finance, to give us a report on our mid-year budget.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayors, Maple Tam and Councilmember. Before you, it's the mid-year review presentations. Last June, we adopted 2023, 24's general funds budget with a balanced budget that include conservative revenue estimates. It's also increased COLA, pension, healthcare, and minimum wage increase. We also provide additional $2.8 million for the capital improvement plan. As we move into the fiscal year, during fiscal year 23, 24, we're seeing an increase in revenue, so we are proposing adjustments on revenues, adjustments on personnel to address the various structural needs and challenge. We're also seeing requests from across departments for maintenance and operations costs. With the various increase and decrease, we anticipate a general funds budget surplus of $1.7 million. The general funds revenue is anticipated to increase by $2.6 million, that's equivalent to 2.8%. Mainly is the sale tax and measure Y, which increased by $1.6 million. As we move into the fiscal year, our consultant HGL Company's C I declines, a slight declines in revenue, but in comparison to the initial projection, we're proposing a $1.6 million increase. We also see a trend, upward trend of franchise tax of additional $500,000, so it's utility user tax of additional $500,000.
or any other matters within the council's jurisdiction. You will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes once Deputy City Clerk announces your name. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers today, Mayor.
I will now close public hearing, comments, and move on to the next item. Staff communication. Mr. Bobbidea, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call upon our Director of Community Services, Maricela Valdés.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have one item to share with you this evening. We've got, our city library is going to be offering a magic show for our next First Friday program, which will take place on March 1st at 7:00 P.M. So come join us at the library as we watch Illusions by Alan, featuring award-winning Alan Oshiro. The show's going to include astonishing acts of magic, fun comedy for all ages, incredible levitation, some ball manipulation, and a lot more. So the performance is also going to include audience participation, and it'll reach out to the hearts of kids, young adults, families of all ages. So we're going to be serving fresh, light refreshments, and we'll also be distributing books to all the children in attendance to take home. So no registration is required, and we encourage everybody to join us. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. That's it? All right, on to the next one. Public hearing, item number four, annual weed abatement program. I would like to call upon Mr. Bobbidea.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual weed abatement program that we have. We have a staff report. Staff is available for any questions the council may have.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the podium and state your name. Deputy, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Is there any discussion on motion for approval of item number four? Oh, sorry. Closed public hearing. Is there any discussion on, or a motion for approval?
You know, when we have the weed abatement program, I'm wondering also if we can bring some kind of process when it comes to any of our, whether it be our facilities that we own or any businesses, that they make sure they, they keep up their upkeep. You know, whether it be, you know, you hear what's happening in L.A., you know, you heard about the graffiti, you know, they're building. So I would like to see a lot of our businesses making sure they're, they have that upkeep so they don't allow for homeless or anybody else to go in there and just, you know, think that they could just, you know, live there. So if we have some kind of weed abatement as a process or as a policy to bring in, so it allows other businesses, when they come into Santa Fe Springs, they see that everybody's keeping their, you know, whether or not they have a business there functioning, but that they're keeping some kind of upkeep there.
We can certainly take a look at that for our next weed abatement program.
So would we do it with the adoption of Councilmember Zamora's?
Mayor, I would not, only because we may have to look at our current policies, and that's something we'll bring back to the council for you to...
Is there, is there a motion? Moved by Councilman Rounds, second by Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number five, fiscal year 2023-24 mid-year budget review and modifications. I would like to call upon Mr. Bobbidea again.
Thank you, Mayor. We're real excited to present our 2023-2024 mid-year budget review and modifications. This will be the last of our mid-year budgets. We're going to be doing quarterly budgets starting next fiscal year, so this will be the last time you see it at mid-year. Next year, you'll see, you'll see them at quarter break. So we'll be able to provide more information a lot sooner as to how our budgets are doing. So without further ado, I'd like to present Lana, the HR Director of Finance, to give us a report on our mid-year budget.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayors, Maple Tam and Councilmember. Before you, it's the mid-year review presentations. Last June, we adopted 2023-24's general funds budget with a balanced budget that include conservative revenue estimates. It's also increased COLA, pension, healthcare, and minimum wage increase. We also provide additional $2.8 million for the capital improvement plan. As we move into the fiscal year, during fiscal year 23-24, we're seeing an increase in revenue. So we are proposing adjustments on revenues, adjustments on personnel to address the various structural needs and challenge. We're also seeing requests from across departments for maintenance and operations costs. With the various increase and decrease, we anticipate a general funds budget surplus of $1.7 million. The general funds revenue is anticipated to increase by $2.6 million. That's equivalent to 2.8%. Mainly is the sale tax and measure Y, which increased by $1.6 million. As we move into the fiscal year, our consultant HGL Company's C I declines, a slight declines in revenue, but in comparison to the initial projection, we're proposing a $1.6 million increase. We also see a trend, upward trend of franchise tax of additional $500,000. So it's utility user tax of additional $500,000. $300,000 for vehicle in-lease and department's revenues adjustment as well.
And Lana, if I may, can you go back to the last screen? I just want to point out that our, with the title of total state subventions, that's actually the first time I've ever seen that title. But what that really is, is our in-lease vehicle license fee. So back when redevelopment died, our property tax, it was something the governor came up with. It's called a triple flip, and it's a vehicle in-lease fee that we got in lieu of that. So they call it state subventions, but really it's an in-lease vehicle license fee.
So we make that adjustment in moving forward to the next document. So that is the in-lease vehicle tax. Initially, it was a vehicle's registration fees. During 2004, there was a, they stayed to balance the budgets and took that money away from the local agencies. But in return, they backfill with the property tax, dollar for dollar. Instead calling it tax, it is definitely a fee. So the project that's expenditure for fiscal year is anticipated to increase by $1.3 million, For personnel adjustment, we're looking to add seven new positions, five adjustment to the current position. That included elimination of the economic development managers. The proposed personnel net adjustments is about $539,000. We are looking to cover those with the current vacancies through the years. The expenditure adjustment across the department is including the $210,000 from general government for IT staff augmentation, software fiscal examinations, and general contractual services. Community Service is requesting $410,000. That including a newly created media and communication activities for supply consultant and software. Park and recreations is looking to add additional events and programs and reopening the aquatic center. Community Service also requesting replacement of stage and canopies. Town Center Hall's added wraps, Christmas tree, additional fundings for furnitures and conference room. Town Center Hall, we're requesting a smart televisions. There's also a, a just, a saving from the teen centers kitchens remodeling. Fire Rescue Department is requesting a $255,000 expenditure for vehicle parts and a fire mechanic vehicles. The department is also have an upward trends on reimbursement permits and related fire fees. Police Service is requesting $50,000 for contractual service. Public Work is requesting for $5,000. A majority part of it is outsourcing fleet repairs and increased supply and material across the various activities. On top of that, there's cleanings, the studies fees, and overtime for the inspector and on-call staff augmentations. So in looking into the summary, general funds, as mentioned earlier, we're looking at $1.7 million of surplus after these requests for increase in revenues and request additional expenditures from various departments. Going to the water fund, the water fund originally adopted a budget with a revenue projection of $16.7 million, but we are seeing a Dow trend in consumption. So we are adjusting the revenue of Dow war by $800,000. The fund is requesting an adjustment of $110,000. That, that is including replacing valves, ACs, pipe, waste disposal, emergency contractors, and water line repairs for the Omega projects. So with the adjustment, we're looking for the, the water fund is literally underwater by $1.1 million. That is combination of slower in consumptions and additional requests from departments.
Lana, if I may, I just want to, for the council, really focus on that $910,000. That's money that we're supplementing with the general fund, so we're basically subsidizing the water department or the water that our residents consume and our businesses. This budget fund summary has zero dollars for capital improvements. So we have quite a bit of unmet need in our water, our pipes, our wells, as you all know. So without doing any of that work, we're already $900,000 under, so it's definitely being subsidized as we speak.
As we move into developing the next fiscal year's budget, we continue to monitor the ongoing economics and organizational issues, one of which is the infrastructure's fundings. Currently, we have, the City Council established an account for capital projects. However, the city will be challenged to procure an increased level of fundings to address any significant deferred maintenance need moving forward. Calper unfunded liabilities, as many know that our unfunded liability payment will continue to increase the next 10 years. We will run into challenge if there's investments lost or lower discount rate or a change in assumptions. The current geopolitical clambers also provide challenge, one of which is the invasion of UKINs by Russia. And the upcoming elections also present a level of uncertainties in the economies. Rising inflation that is, that will directly tie to the rising cost of acquiring item and service necessary to deliver local programs and services. The next, currently, we're, finance staff is working with the various department to develop the next coming year's budget. Late in March, we'll have the first kickoff workshop. In April, city managers will engage in budget meetings and with the departments. Late April and May, we're looking at the second workshop. We're just looking to, department to present their proposed budgets. Late in May, that is our final workshop, and we are looking to bring the budget back for approval in mid-June. For future development, Renee mentioned it earlier, we will provide quarterly reports moving forward. Before I end my presentations, I would like to extend my thanks to across the department for the effort to get us the informations needed for mid-year presentation and mid-year reviews. Also want to thank you, finance staff, for putting this together, and thank you, the council, for your continuous support. Thank you.
And thank you, Lana. I know you were here yesterday. We saw you here, so thank you for coming in on your day off to help me get this done.
Any discussion?
I do have a discussion. You know, we are hiring 70 positions, and I see that one of them is superintendent, like in Public Works area, and I know that we've already hired a manager over there, facilities manager. I understand that we need to hire positions, but I mean, I don't want to see us more top-heavy. I would like to see, you know, part-time positions becoming full-time positions. That could have been something where maybe four or five part-timers could be full-time, and not only that, get medical benefits, especially during a time when, you know, there are a lot of people that, a lot of Americans that are not getting medical benefits to support themselves. So, you know, I would like you guys to have that compassion next time in looking into that, you know, it would be much appreciated.
And Councilmember, if I may, you know, just to be clear, we gave a directive to staff to look at all our part-time positions. And the discussion that was had, that I'm not sure reached out to everyone, was I didn't think it was fair that we had part-timers working side-by-side with full-timers, getting paid a lot less with less benefits, getting paid as part-timers. So the directive was, we either have part-timers or we have full-timers. And to me, in this budget, our goal is to create and convert a lot of those part-timers into full-timers, and that's something we are going to work in this budget come July 1st, to ensure that's in this budget to get those part-timers that are working the 40 hours without the benefits and without what the others get to be fair and equal across the board. So we are committed to doing that across the board, specifically Public Works, some positions in finance. Where are we starting to do that? I think we've done several. But the goal is to separate what a real part-timer is versus what a full-timer is.
And not only that, even looking into, you know, job analysts, where you're looking at the whole city as a whole, because we have people that haven't received, you know, raises in a long time, and they're, they've been doing double, triple duties of, you know, that are, that are out of their job description, but they do it because they love this city. So we just want to make sure we can maximize by making sure that we take care of them, because it almost seems what we've, what we've been looking at is, I mean, I love to see new faces come in, but to see them, you know, leave right away, it almost seems like we're training them here, and then they're going to another city. So I mean, I don't want to speak for my council, but I'm pretty sure you guys have seen that too, because I look at individuals and I'm like, you know, like, wow, who's this, you know? So it's great to see, but, you know, whatever we can do to, with our part-timers and, you know, if we have to raise the pay scale, let's do that too, you know, make sure that we keep them and they see that there's progression or succession here.
No, absolutely. And I think part of the other, the other half of the puzzle is the class and comp study. Some of these are being taken care of now just because of current need. But long-term is that class and comp study is going to revitalize and revamp some of the titles. If positions are doing work that they're not getting compensated for, the class and comp study will cover that and compensate that. We're hoping to have that hopefully to you sometime in maybe April or May.
You know, I just want to comment and thank Lana and everybody. I think what people don't realize in a short period of time, in less than 12, 2012, where they took away redevelopment money, I think there was only two people up here, but they were probably wondering what we were going to do as a city, because you took away a lot of money and a lot of people's jobs were at risk and just... And today, we are in a great position to keep moving the city forward. So the things that we've done in a short period of time, and as you see, our budget is double than what it was just a short live ago, really goes to show we have more work to do. Like Joe Angel and other people have said, we want to make sure we keep ourselves whole, but keep the people here and give them a fair wage to keep moving forward. And this budget shows that we can do that, but we have to be smart with the money and doing it in a way that makes it prosper for everybody. So I agree. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the hard work and dedication that you do. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. Anybody else? Could I get a move?
My second.
First by Joe Angel, second by Annette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered.
Item number six, police service staging facility storm damage, emergency repairs. I would like to call upon Mr. Bobbidea.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of those unfortunate unfunded liabilities that just happened with our last storm. Unfortunately, our police services staging facility suffered severe flooding. The storm really did some work to the building, to the point where it needed to be vacated. And currently, our officers are staging in the city of Whittier and being dispatched to Santa Fe Springs. So before you, as an item pursuant to the Municipal Code, Section 34.23 and the California Public Contract Code, Section 22050, that by forfeit's vote, the council will allow us to make those repairs under emergency power to make sure that we can repair this facility as quickly as possible.
Any discussions? Is there a motion?
Aye.
Second. First by Juanita, second by Joe Angel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Next, housing successor, successor agency, City Council. Public financing authority, water utility authority, housing successor, successor agency, and City Council consent calendars. We have a total of nine consent items, number seven through 15. Item number 15 is the first amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, providing for a 5% increase to the city's match of contributions to the 401A Deferred Compensation Plan and an annual compensation physical exam. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendars? I'll move.
My second.
First by Bill, second by Annette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Wow, that's it? We're over almost? Wow. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Martin.
None tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Zamora.
None tonight.
Mayor Pro Tem Rounds.
None tonight, Mayor.
And I have none. Council comments, AB 1234, council conference reporting. Anybody have anything to report?
I didn't go to the conference.
Councilmember Martin.
Nothing to report on comments. It's just great to see our budget, where it's at. I was one of those councils that it was not a good budget, and we had to do a lot of things that was very hard to do and, but we're at a great place now. Thank you. A lot has to do with our, sort of our employees. And like Joe Angel said, we want to make sure our employees know that they are appreciated and taken care of, and I think with our, well, I know with our new leadership here, that that will happen. We give direction and our, and like I said, we actually get listened to. And I see and I'm very, I'm very confident that with what directions we give, it will happen. So I look forward to keeping our employees. It's great to see the new employees here. It's awesome to see new faces. The detectives, they've been around for a while. I've seen, I've seen King for a while. She's been around, great to see her here. The Miss Santa Fe Springs pageant is open and running, so if you know anybody that wants to be in the pageant, please submit their application. And it's great to see new officers here in our city, but please always remember, today was Keith Boyer's anniversary of seven years, and it was really hard for us. We lost someone very dear to many of us and, and Captain, that, you know, and please let you know that we will always be there for you guys, and no matter if it was just seven years or this day of, I think all of us were here when it happened, and you'll always have our support. And just remember, when you see an officer out there, thank them, because you never know what might happen. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to also thank our new PSOs for coming on board. I want to thank our detectives and Captain Reese, very good of what you said on your presentation. Very good, solid people coming into our city. Thank you so much. And I wanted to thank Lana and the team for the budget. It was a very nice presentation, and you laid it out very well. I know that it takes the team to get all that done, so I wanted to thank you and all the staff that does that. And I wanted to thank our staff for the dance that we had, the Mardi Gras. It was very nice. Sorry, young people, it's 50 or over, so you can't go. But I was there, it was very nice to be there and enjoy. And I wanted to also thank our mayor, and I want to thank our councilmember Zamora for your donations to our Santa Fe Springs Women's Club Quarter Mania. It is so appreciated, and I know her, she's just laughing right there. Isabel is just very happy because you two brought in a huge amount of donations, and we really appreciate it. All that is going to come in handy when we start giving it back to our city. And thank you to Juanita for, I know you're going to be there. Can't wait to see you there. And you all are welcome to come to our Quarter Mania on March 18th, March 17th?
Seventeenth.
All right, all right. Okay, let's not give too many of our secrets out, but, okay. I also wanted to say that we have some leaves and debris. I keep getting some, I sent the email or the text to James Enrique that I keep getting some complaints about some leaves and debris on the corner of Telegraph and Cedar Dale, where it says, "Welcome to Santa Fe Springs." It's getting, it's getting clogged up in the sewers, and we really need to get that taken care of. Has, has anything happened, or we're going to go in there and take a look?
I was out there this morning to look at it, and it looks like it's caltried right away. It's unfenced. I'll reach out to them, but given the fact that there's rain...
Yes.
...happening, and then coming next week again, we may end up sending some of our staff in there to clean some of that up.
Oh, please, yes. The neighbors around there, they're, you know, the homeless, there's a problem with the homeless, but the neighbors around there, they, they credit, they compliment themselves for having that little corner that looks so nice, and it's kind of getting clogged up. So, and I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that's in attendance and just to have a nice evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Zamora?
I was looking at Mr. Rounds. Uh, you know, uh, you know, Juanita and, uh, Annette, uh, they, they said it best, uh, you know, when we talk about, you know, our, our officers and, and, you know, and years, you know what, it was just years ago that people were talking about defunding the police and, and, you know, it was ridiculous, because those same people were calling the police when they needed, you know, help. And, you know, so, you know, thank you to all of our, you know, our officers, just the fact what they do, you know, it's, uh, it's, it is a thankless job at times, and, you know, and the fact that we just brought on two, uh, PSOs and two officers, and, and the fact that we're looking at them using, um, you know, high-tech, you know, the abilities, and, you know, we, I know a couple of years ago, we made decisions to ma- bring in license plate reader cameras, and that was a huge success for us. I mean, uh, it, it was a huge success, because, uh, you know, you had all these different, um, robberies and, you know, and burglaries going on, and, and I think those things helped us out a lot immensely. And then, not only go- not only that, going to LED lighting, it helped out a lot, because, um, you, now the officers weren't afraid to go in sep- in different areas, especially at Los Nidos Park, you know? They, they were talking about that, how there was dark spots and, and, you know, and I'm glad that we are moving in that, in, in that, um, direction. Um, the only thing I have right now is just, uh, that, that is actually weighing on my heart is, um, you know, I just want to see that, um, our staff, that we are compassionate towards those who've been here, and, you know, whatever we do, you know, when we make a decision, um, remember, it doesn't just affect that person, it affects all of us. And, you know, whether it be good or bad, we just want to make sure that, um, employees that have served us for a long time, that we just always treat them in the, you know, wha- whatever may, whatever's taking place, just make sure that everything's always done in a professional manner. So, um, you know, and always may God always bless the city of Santa Fe Springs, and may God always bless all you guys. Have a good night.
Mayor Protem?
Well, I want to thank everyone for bearing the storms that we've been having, and I wasn't sure how many people we'd have here tonight, but, you know, uh, as already been said, I want to really highlight the finance department and everybody involved for the mid-year budget review, and, um, it, very well done, very well done, very well presented. And I want to thank the city manager for bringing back city, uh, Santa Fe Springs, what I feel was the way it was years ago. Uh, the mayor had alluded to, uh, 2012, and I was on the council then when we had to eliminate over 30 positions. That was not easy at all, not easy at all. And slowly but surely, it's coming back. Um, we're, we're going to be back up to full staff again. Uh, the mayor had alluded to the city budget. It's, it's a third higher than I've ever seen it, and it is great to be on the city council, because we're here not for ourselves, we're here for the residents and providing the services that we can. And I'm looking forward to, uh, seeing some new faces around here, as, uh, Councilmember Zamora stated, and keeping the ones that we do have. So, um, and I also, I want to just, I ha- already had it on my notes to, uh, the end of watch for Keith Boyer, um, seven years ago. Um, I'll, I'll never forget that day, and, uh, I went up to the, along with other people, went up to the station that night, and unbelievable. So it's hard to believe it's already been seven years, but everyone have a great weekend. Uh, looks like we have some more rain coming in, so, um, be safe. Thank you.
Um, it's horrible going last. We don't really get to say much, but, um, just again, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, 50 years of service in the community, in a, to a business, a women-owned business. Uh, that's not very easy to do in today's day and age. Um, usually, um, electronics or something, technology takes these old businesses out, and they are shining like no other time, so, uh, congratulations to them. Um, myself and our city manager took a tour yesterday to another business that we would never think was even in our city, that does so many different things of, uh, you know, they, it's a poly company that they do, um, floors for airports, they do, uh, military aspects of things, so many things that we use here in, in our, in our city. And there's so many businesses like that in this community that we don't even know and we don't even touch on. But that's what makes us special, and that's what makes us being able to do the things that we do on a year-to-year basis. And I want to thank all the businesses in this city, because without them, we will not have a city the way we have it today. So thank you guys for everything you do. Um, our employees, thank you guys again. We can't thank you guys enough. Um, and then one more thing on the graffiti. Uh, I also took the city manager by the graffiti that's on Norwalk and Tele- Telegraph, and, uh, Kwan, maybe we can, Florence, I'm sorry, Florence, and maybe we can get the owners or something to make sure that we get them to either take, take it down, or we have to figure it out, because it, it looks disgusting, and we need to do something about it, and it's being talked about. So, um, with that, um, I would like to adjourn the, the meeting on the anniversary of Keith Boyer. Uh, meeting is adjourned.